Welcome, everyone, to the special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is March 17th, 2020. We do have a regularly scheduled meeting today, however, it has been postponed by a week due to the coronavirus crisis that is facing virtually everyone. So if the city clerk would please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Sinks?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Here.
And Mayor Scharf.
And just for the record, Mayor Scharf is calling into this meeting, however, he is not physically present. According to a directive by the governor, we do have the ability to call into council meetings for this emergency period. All right, okay, so that'll wrap up the roll call. Our first item is 20-7255. It's a ratification of a proclamation of a local emergency related to COVID-19. We have our city manager who made the proclamation last week. Welcome, Deb.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Paul. I'm just going to read a little status update for the city where we are with the COVID response and our preparations going forward ahead of proclamation. First, a little bit about dealing with the response activity. This is according to the FEMA Response Framework. The priorities are to safeguard our people first, safeguard our assets second, safeguard any or other resources such as financial third, and lastly, safeguard our environment. With that in mind, we have been focusing on trying to prevent the spread of COVID-19 while providing the public with as many services as possible, whether that's essential or nonessential. Public safety monitoring is ongoing. The city is sending out daily updates to the community and will continue to do so by 5:00 PM every day. We have shut down all city facilities and are providing as many ongoing services to the public as we can. In particular, the senior center is supporting the membership by staying in contact and providing essential services to them remotely. We are taking the opportunity to deep clean all facilities and increasing the level of wiping down services and social distancing for essential personnel. We are in high coordination with the county and other cities with regard to food distribution to those in need, including our seniors, organizing volunteers, and potential food drives. We're directing the public to services within our departments and have found ways to provide many of our services remotely. Information is flowing from our website for both the community and our businesses, and we are fielding lots of community questions and connecting with them with the appropriate information. More recently, it's not up yet, but we will have an open-for-business webpage that will outline for community members which businesses are open and which businesses are closed. And we are arranging for some of our small businesses to do a shout-out saying we're open so that the public knows that they can go there and get essential supplies. In preparing for future meetings for maximum public participation in the shelter-in-place environment, we're looking at delivering council meetings, committee meetings, commission meetings, at the opportunity of delivering those fully remotely. At the moment, we have a bit of a conflict between the shelter-in-place order and the requirement, even under the governor's executive order, to offer a public space by which people can witness and participate in these meetings. So we're just trying to de-conflict that, and then we will put in a different plan for the council meetings perhaps and some of the other ones rolling forward. This does give us some time to figure out how to do that. And that's all I had, and I just wanted to thank people for their patience.
Excellent, thank you, Deb. Very much appreciated. So before we get to any questions from council, I want to make an announcement to the public because this is a meeting in which telecommunications and email has been enabled. If you have a comment to make regarding either item one or item two, please email it to our city clerk, and her address is cityclerk@cupidino.org. As long as we get the email prior to when the public comments are concluded, we will attempt to communicate that to myself as the acting person coordinating the meeting right now, and that will be provided in the public comment. So we have an opportunity to ask questions of our staff at this point. Are there any councilmembers that wish to ask questions of the staff and the staff report here? Councilmember Willie?
So are we going to get a brief report first?
Yes, we're going to do the ratification report.
Okay, very good. So I apologize, we do have a city attorney's report with regard to the proclamation itself. Welcome, Heather.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So the Cupertino municipal code designates the city manager as the Director of Emergency Services, and this authorizes her to issue a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. This is defined to include a number of things, but relevant here, it includes the conditions of extreme peril to the safety of persons caused by conditions such as epidemics. And based on, so on March 11th, the city manager declared a local emergency based on mounting evidence of the spread of COVID-19, and that evidence is outlined in the staff report. It includes a March 10th ratification and extension of a local health emergency countywide by the Board of Supervisors, which preceded a number of other local emergencies and local health emergencies determined earlier. Under the MUNI code, this declaration of a local emergency authorizes the city manager to provide and request mutual aid to other, outlining other jurisdictions. It also authorizes her to make rules and regulations to protect life and property during the emergency, to obtain supplies, and to direct the emergency response. Now, the proclamation of emergency by the city manager must be confirmed by the city council within seven days, which is the action that we are bringing to you tonight. If you do confirm her proclamation of emergency, those powers will continue. In addition, it also authorizes the city to seek reimbursement of emergency response costs from the state and federal government. And if you do ratify the proclamation of emergency, the city will, council, we will return to you within 60 days to determine whether the emergency continues or whether the emergency may be declared to have been ceased.
Okay, very good, thank you, Heather. Do we have any questions of either Heather or Deb from council? Councilmember Sinks?
No, but I'd be prepared to move that we adopt resolution number 20-028, ratifying the Director of Emergency Services proclamation on March 11th, 2020 of the existence of a local emergency resulting from community spread of the coronavirus, also known as COVID-19.
Okay, very good. I'll go ahead and take a second. I will want to point out that we'll give our other councilmembers a chance to comment, but before that and after the second, we will give the public a chance to comment as well. So is there a second to Councilmember Sinks's motion?
Oh, second.
Councilmember Chow, seconds. And the public comment, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have one public comment.
Okay.
That I'll read, I'll place on the podium. This email is from Connie Cunningham. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, thank you for this action that will allow our city to take swift actions to protect us all. I thank you and city staff for your service, especially now, for the work you do on behalf of all residents. I wish all of you and your families good health during these trying times. Sincerely, Connie Cunningham, self only. I will be viewing from home rather than attending my husband and I are well.
Very good. Thank you very much, and we'll bring it back up to council. Are there any further comments from council prior to our vote on this motion? Councilmember Chow?
So I have a question regarding the funding that we, my assistant might get from federal government with this declaration. What type of funding we will get? And some people are requesting the city may provide funding for rent assistance or even, I think Berkeley is considering bridge funding for small businesses. Would this kind of funding eventually be reimbursable by the federal government?
That's really the big question. As soon as the federal government, I don't know, I'm not clear that they've passed their aid package just yet. Does anybody know that?
No, they're still working on it in the Senate at this point.
They're still working on it. So typically, as far as I know, federal funding flows to the state, state combines some funding with them and will flow down to county and cities. Let me answer a couple of your questions in a different order. For small businesses, for like bridging loans, an example, the Small Business Administration, I believe, is thought to be providing some of those bridge loans at the federal level. I do know that the state has waived the waiting period for unemployment due to COVID or COVID effects of their businesses closing. And then in terms of providing renters assistance, which we will get to when we speak about item number two, I don't know that we would be reimbursed for it, but because the mission of West Valley Community Service covers that, we have been working very directly with them that if there's any Cupertino resident outplace because of an eviction, for example, or needs renters assistance, that he can certainly come to the city and ask for it. And my guess is that council would grant it. That's not in the purview of the city manager, that is in the purview of council.
So I'm guessing the federal government fundamentally provides foods, the cost that we need to provide shelter, other emergency services, right?
I would guess that they will, I don't know, it would be a complete guess on my part. I do know that theoretically that they would replace any or pay back any time and effort on city staff's part that's spent on COVID, which is why we're tracking hours and.
Oh, even the time.
Oh, yeah, we're filling out time cards. If I'm buying, if I have to buy extra supplies, if I have to procure something in an emergency because something else has happened, those kinds of things are covered. I am not aware of what else they might cover.
Oh, like disinfecting, the extra disinfecting, sanitation?
Yeah, like if we bought, let's say we bought a bunch of wipes or something.
I've lost my audio.
I lost my audio too.
Oh, Mayor Scharf, we actually have heard you for the very first time now, and Seth as well. I believe that was the attorney Friday, too.
So maybe you can't hear, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Oh, great.
And I got my camera working.
Okay, excellent.
So I'm wondering, is it possible for the city, for example, to purchase such as a batch of masks and then distribute them? Would that be something that's reimbursable? I mentioned that it's because in Taiwan, they have Medicare for All, and masks are distributed through Medicare, so everyone gets a certain number of masks. This relieves the urge for people to buy everything up because there's assurance that the city will be, that they get it from pharmacy.
It is likely reimbursable if we deem it necessary for response to the emergency.
So that's something we might consider that.
Might consider that.
Okay, so how would we think about what kind of things the city can provide these kind of supplies for our citizens?
Well, I would probably ask you to let me go back and take a look at what supplies we might need. We have not had any requests for those. We also are very sensitive about following the guidance we currently have, and that is that the masks, we need to leave the supply for a lot of the medical folks first, but we are also looking at procuring supplies in concert with other cities in the county if requested, and that way we can get our hands on more of a supply if somebody else is handling some of those, too.
Like hand sanitizer, sanitation wipes.
Yeah, those are all, those are all gone.
I'm guessing many of the people who have trouble paying rent would have trouble purchasing these items, too.
That we could hand them out?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
And another question is, do we, I guess, we are relying on West Valley Community Services. Do they need more volunteers? Do we need, does the city need to help call out for volunteers?
So we are. From our Parks and Rec Department and in coordination with the county, West Valley Community Services is included in the Second Harvest Food Bank effort to do a food drive, to supply foods to their pantry, and to be able to provide food distribution to different people who may need it, who are in need. And so we're coordinating all of that with county resources as well.
So how would the citizens find out where they can volunteer or even know there is? Because I get people asking me about, they want to help, but then they don't seem to have the information of how.
So they can either call the city line, which is live and being answered, and we can point them to the right link on the website, or we can connect them directly with the county, the county resources.
So are we sending out such information through Facebook, maybe? Then people can learn from Facebook where West Valley Volunteer Community Service needs volunteer this kind, what would they do?
Yeah, they don't, in particular, they just told us, they don't, they don't in particular need volunteers there, but the county definitely needs volunteers.
The county needs, oh, okay.
They need volunteers for food distribution right now. When you're in an incident command center structure, which is what we are in now, the information needs to flow from the top to make sure it's orderly and that we don't waste a bunch of time being disorganized. So we are waiting, we're basically on coordinating calls with the county and making sure all of the services get pulled all the way through.
Oh, so if the county needs more volunteers?
Yes.
They may ask the city to send out information?
Yes.
But we have not received.
We're in coordinating calls. They're just now starting the food distribution effort, for example.
Okay. I have one more question, but maybe I'll let other people ask first.
Really, in the interest of efficiency, I want to have everyone go once, and then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
So one more thing is, some parents have organized on WeChat SOS groups so that people can join the group in case anyone needs some emergency help. Someone can send out, and other people in that group can go and help. I wonder whether the city could help organize this kind of group, maybe through our block leader program, neighborhood watch program, and maybe take this time to encourage more people to join this kind of groups, that people can check in with each other whether anyone need emergency help.
If you provide me with that contact information, I'm happy to look into it.
This is only WeChat, but I'm wondering whether the city, that gives me a thought that maybe the city can use our existing network and expand on that to provide more neighborhood self-support groups.
Yes, in an ICS or Incident Command Center situation, we organize our volunteers with one organization, and that's our Parks and Rec, because they have so much more access to our nonprofit organizations. So if they would like to volunteer for something, please get in contact with the city, and we can get them organized with the city process. Okay, thank you.
And just for information, our city council addresses are first initial last name. Citycouncil@cupidino.org goes to all of us, and citymanager@cupidino.org goes to Deb. Councilmember Sinks?
Thank you. I'll just point out a few things we've learned at the Air District and beyond about these N95 masks in particular. You know, they're the ones that ought to filter out things. The problem with people using masks that aren't sick is, I understand it is, first, if they fit well, there's a substantial amount of resistance to breathing, and your exhale heats up your face, and that becomes irritating, sometimes sooner rather than later, but it's hard to do for a long period. If you're already struggling with breathing, that you have shallow breathing or other things, that resistance can really further inhibit your breathing ability. If the masks don't fit well, which is often the case, you can often be accelerating the airflow around the sides, so that may make them counterproductive. And the third is, if the mask does happen to capture germs, which right here would be the intention, the problem is a lot of people don't handle it well, and so you may move those germs and touching the mask to your hands and then to your face. So the positive thing a mask could do is reduce touching of your nose and mouth, and obviously, if you're sick, a mask does really protect people around you, but if you're sick, you ought to be home anyway, right? You shouldn't be the one in your household or in your neighborhood out shopping. You know, my neighborhood, we've organized a bit, and we've sent notes around to offer to shop for people who are at risk or sick. What we found at the Air District, and we had those smoke events the last few years, and it's the same issues with masks not necessarily fitting well. We'd have people go outside thinking that if they just wear the mask, they're going to be okay. And again, the masks often operate with some compromise, and people are just generally better off in these circumstances, following the directives of the county, and staying home except for the most essential things. Obviously, if you have no choice and you follow a careful protocol with the masks, right, you can, as healthcare workers are trained to do, you stand a better chance of effectively protecting yourself. But I'd point out that with all the procedures that healthcare professionals are trained on in this era, you know, you can look at the statistics, they are at highest risk for contracting the disease. So we all ought to be paying special attention and looking out for them and using our medical facilities sparingly at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sinks. Councilmember Willie, any comments?
So, yeah, it sounded very interesting to hear that the state and federal are looking to free up funds, they're still working on those, but I would then somewhat worry, in an emergency like this, the residents, the individuals that are up against their rent, it's in the very near future, and perhaps, you know, what the state and federal are doing isn't going to get here soon enough. I liked what I heard that if Berkeley is working on maybe a bridge program or something, as soon as we could get some evidence that the state or federal are going to be providing the assistance, but it's not coming fast enough getting right down to where it's needed, whether it's the residents or the small businesses that are not getting their revenue that they need to be getting. So with that being said, I think two things that I would hope we might be able to do. One is that we've got the city attorney monitoring what the state and federal is doing, so as soon as something is clear, if we need to reconvene to then make a direction to proceed with whatever it is, getting that information, getting the forms from the state, getting the forms from the federal government, letting the residents know, you don't need to run around looking for this stuff, come to the city, we've got the information, we've got the forms, we'll help. And second, if we feel that it's assured, then the concept of maybe bridge loans until the actual funds get made available, and then hopefully the city would be reimbursed. So I would make those two kind of questions slash suggestions, any feedback would be appreciated, so I kind of know what substance there is in terms of my suggestions.
We can certainly look into what the scope of reimbursement potential is a little bit further, and I will say that your second item on the agenda tonight is exactly to deal with some of the.
All right.
Financial pinching that might be occurring right now, and so we have brought that forward to you to consider after this item.
Yeah.
For renter protections.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie, and that's a good segue into our mayor who's on the line. So I understand that there is a direct communication constantly between the mayor and the city manager, and there is the ability to call an emergency meeting by the mayor within 24-hour notice, and so I am confident that that would be, you know, called if it were called for. And do we still have Mayor Scharf on the line?
Yes, I'm still here.
Excellent. Do you have any comments with regard to this item?
No, I mean, this is solely the proclamation of emergency. I think we were digressing there into the second item, which would be whether we're going to pass an urgency ordinance or not, and what would go into that. So I'm fully in support of this agenda item for the proclamation of state of emergency.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Mayor Scharf. I'm going to go ahead and close the discussion and bring this to a vote. We'll do a voice vote. Madam City Clerk, it's up to you, I can call it as well, but if you prefer, please feel free.
All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. We are now on to agenda item number two on our special meeting agenda, and let me get my agenda back up here electronically. It's 20-7254. The subject is actions related to income loss and evictions due to the novel coronavirus. And I thank our city attorney staff for turning this around relatively quickly. San Jose did have a similar urgency or emergency ordinance, they might call it there, that they've considered recently. I look forward to hearing the legal presentation as to some of the details that are being proposed here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and we have our deputy city attorney Seth Peta on Zoom meeting, and I think he'll be giving the presentation if we could turn it over to him.
All right, welcome, Seth.
Thanks. Am I audible in the community hall?
You are audible. We don't see you, but now we see you, yes.
Okay.
We can see and hear you.
Well, I will be referring to my notes, so I'll have the odd feeling of having you all seeing me while I read from my presentation. I do not have a presentation for you tonight other than my oral presentation, but, so the name of this item tonight is, or the matter we're discussing is, let me see if I can toggle here. Well, I'll just dive right into it. So the governor, as of last night or this morning, signed an executive order regarding COVID-19 pandemic-related evictions, which a number of you have mentioned already. The main thing that this executive order, if I misspoke there, does is it removes some state-level roadblocks to local agencies implementing temporary measures to prevent evictions. So in pertinent part, the order suspends any provisions of state law that would preempt cities and other local agencies' ability to enact temporary residential eviction moratoria, so long as the local eviction moratorium is based on a renter's documented inability to pay rent due to COVID-19 pandemic economic impact. And this is effective through May 31st unless it's extended. So essentially, it would prevent anyone from claiming that state law prohibits a local agency from prohibiting evictions for the duration of the local agency's ordinance. So as some of you have pointed out, many cities have been taking action, some have actually been taking action prior to the governor's signing of this executive order. Those include Los Angeles and San Francisco. San Jose, a week ago, on the 10th, brought forward for its council's consideration exactly what we're bringing forward to you tonight, not the ordinance itself, but rather a request for direction from the council to proceed with drafting an ordinance. So that's what we're asking you to give us or asking for your consideration of tonight. I will, however, discuss briefly what San Jose is considering tonight, so they actually haven't passed anything yet unless they've already gotten to that agenda item in their meeting this evening. They are considering a combination of an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance that would do the following. It would suspend evictions for no cause, that is, no cause evictions, or. It would suspend evictions for no cause, that is, no cause evictions, or and/or evictions for non-payment of rent for the term of the ordinance. And so the term right now is 30 days unless extended by resolution by the council. Grounds for for-cause evictions are not affected by the ordinance. As I mentioned, non-payment evictions must be documented by the tenant as related to COVID-19 economic impacts. And the way a tenant would do that is that once they receive a notice of termination letter from the landlord, they would have to immediately notify their landlord within the dependency of that letter, of that notice of termination letter, that they have a substantial loss of income for the following reasons, and these are not exclusive reasons, so they could include substantially similar reasons. But those are job loss due to the pandemic, reduction of work hours, work closure, the need to miss work due to a school-aged child being at home, or other similarly caused losses of income. Importantly, this is not a waiver of rent, so it does not affect the renter's contractual obligation to pay the rent. And the landlord can still during this kind of eviction suspension period seek other means to recoup the rent, including negotiations with the tenant. That's actually encouraged by San Jose as the parties negotiate some kind of solution for the state of emergency period. And of course, once the ordinance expires, the landlord would have recourse to other provisions of the state law, including eviction. Importantly also, the city of San Jose doesn't have an obligation to enforce this ordinance, which would obviously add to the many, many burdens on the city at this time. Rather, the tenant and landlord have recourse to the courts. So the landlord could bring, try to bring eviction action, and under this ordinance, the tenant has an affirmative defense that the landlord maybe ignored their documented evidence that they cannot pay. So really, what we're asking for you here tonight is authorization to move forward with drafting. We think that we could do this relatively quickly based on what other cities are doing, bring it back to you within the week, so next Tuesday. As you might imagine, these local actions are happening very quickly. There's only a few in place right now, and so over the next few days, we'll be able to see models from other jurisdictions that will be very helpful in drafting, one for Cupertino. And I believe that's everything I have to tell you now, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Seth. Just by way of process, and again, to keep this efficient, but I want it to be effective as well, I'm going to go ahead and state that we'll do a round of questions and comments from our council. I'm going to limit everyone to five minutes each. I think that should be plenty of time. And keep in mind, you'll have another round after comments from the public. Again, comments from the public, they can be emailed in. So again, cityclerk@cubertino.org. If it is received before the end of our public comments, then the city clerk will read your comment into the record for anyone who is not here. And then after that, we will have another round of comments from council. However, preceding that, I would ask that someone make a motion with regard to that. If we're not able to do it at that point, fine, we'll conduct the comments round. Again, everybody speaks once. I'm not going to put a cap on the amount of time for the second round of comments, but in interest of efficiency, so we're not going back and forth, you know, ad infinitum, we'll go ahead and go with this structure. So again, first round, we're going to have questions and comments from council. Would anyone like to go first?
Turn our comments, and I'd be happy to hear any public comment before I make them.
Okay, excellent. So Councilmember Willie is making some indication, and Councilmember Sinks seems to be okay with waiting until after the public comment to make his comments.
So my questions would pertain to information on how this would then play out to help the resident. So we make the proclamation, and that, I think, in theory, gives the renters confidence that if the letter shows up on eviction based on failure to pay the rent, okay, so they have the confidence the city will help us. Now, that's where the question comes in. How would we help? So let's assume the renter has the letter, comes to the city, comes to City Hall and says, hey, I got this letter. My first suggestion would be that the city needs to help them to understand what the information they need to provide in a very legible form so it doesn't get kicked back, perhaps, the evidence of their job being suspended, or there are evidence of not being able to go to work because they have to take care of their dependents at home that don't have school to go to. So that's the first question. How would we be able to help the residents with this proclamation? Do we have an understanding of that yet?
So Councilmember Willie, just to clarify, this is not a proclamation we're asking for. The item is to ask for direction from council to go back to perhaps draft either an urgency ordinance or a regular ordinance or both, just for the terminology's sake.
So do we have an understanding of what the...
The ask would be?
Yeah, the ask would be. I mean, I'm very much in favor of providing this type of confidence and support for the residents, but I want to be sure that we're going to hit the nail on the head with how we're going to be effective at helping them and make sure that that's going to come back for the review by us, so.
Either Seth or Heather or Deb would like to take a shot at that? I mean, my understanding is that we're basically, you're basically looking for guidance from us as to what those provisions we would like to see are.
I interpret, I believe the question is how will we let the residents know about the additional rights that an ordinance that would be back will provide them? And I think that might be answered by our public information officer about how we're communicating the, if an ordinance is adopted, how we're communicating that to the public so that they know they have these additional safeguards in place. Would that be helpful, Councilmember Willie, to hear?
True. Our public information officer, Brian Babcock, is here this evening. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So we have quite a few ways that we would go ahead and communicate something as important as this. So we definitely would put everything out on our website, push it out through e-notifications, ensuring that the rest of our residents know about this and can help maybe identify folks who might need this help. So they would pass on the word themselves, either through, you know, their block leader e-list or social media. We have Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter and such. We would also work with our CDD department and others to identify any other listers and groups who might help us identify other folks who might need this help.
So in addition to that, so the evidence of needing this eviction protection is kind of, you know, what I think we need to be sure we have well identified. If the government's, the governor's statement that he's already made and now we're trying to navigate, we need to make sure that we're hitting the nail on the head with how to dot, how to have the tenants dot all the i's, cross all the t's, get the forms taken care of as soon as possible so that there is no delay. And do we have an understanding of what's required for evidence?
Yes. What I'm hearing is that you want to make sure that this is a clear process that's easy for the residents to understand and to comply with, and we can certainly take that feedback into account and draft the regulations so that it's very clear what the reasons are, what documentations the residents need to provide to get these protections, and how they process that in order to ensure that they're not evicted from their homes. So we will make sure to draft the ordinance in a way that responds to that concern.
Great.
And there are examples of these, of the specific documents that San Jose and other cities are requiring that, you know, that are worked into those ordinances, and we would do the, consider doing the same here.
Great, thank you. That's what I was after.
That was perfect, and that was right at your five minutes. Would anyone else like to have questions, comments at this point? Councilmember Chau.
Sure, okay.
Oh, I think I heard Mayor Scharf on the...
No, I'll go after Leon.
Okay, very good.
Hi. So I understand that we will require verifiable documentation and to, so this would be eviction suspension, it will not be waiver, so they are expected to steal, but they will be given time to make up the payment after the period?
I'll let Seth...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Heather. Shall I answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, so various jurisdictions are doing different things around this. So it's pretty clear, even based on the language of the executive order, that this is not a rent waiver. So this does not cancel the contractual obligation between the landlord and the tenant. All that cannot happen is the landlord cannot evict the tenant during the term of the ordinance. After the expiration of the ordinance, which in most cases is tied to the state of emergency, so once that is lifted, then the ordinance would lift either thereupon or soon thereafter, then in some cases, the landlord can then, as I mentioned, take legal or other recourse against the tenant, including for back payment. So that those back payments are not waived. In some cases, these ordinances are not even preventing the, what should I say, are not preventing the landlord from seeking penalties on those back payments. And in other cases, for instance, in Los Angeles and San Francisco, there is like a four to six-month window in which the tenant has time to pay back the funds without, you know, being enforced against by the landlord. So there's different ways to do it, to answer your question.
So this applies only after they got their eviction notice? So what if someone haven't gotten the notice, but then they couldn't afford to pay the rent this month or next month? Can they just apply for a way, a delay of payment for the landlord? Is there a way for them to do that?
So that could be up to the...
Would they have penalty just by not paying this month without applying for a permission to delay the payment?
Well, a lot of these terms are subject to the lease between, this is a contract between the landlord and the tenant. Some of these ordinances require that the tenant notify the landlord as soon as they're aware that they won't be able to meet the next month's rent check. And that's actually what the Apartment Association has been asking jurisdictions who are considering these ordinances to do. They want their constituents to have the most notice possible. San Jose's, I believe, what it does is it requires, within the dependency of the notice to terminate letter from the landlord, the tenant must notice the landlord that they cannot pay. And that just has to be a simple notice. They don't have to supply all of the background documentation, which might take some time to pull together. If the landlord persists and files an unlawful detainer action, then the tenant would supply that evidence as part of their affirmative defense, and there's a rebuttable presumption that they cannot pay if they pull those documents together.
Okay. So I also hope that this kind of ordinance will apply to small business also, because many businesses are depending on their income to make their monthly rent payment too. And if we don't protect them by the time we, this crisis is over, many people won't have a job to come back to because the businesses would have closed. The businesses might have been evicted. So can we include this tenant protection for businesses also?
The state, the executive order does allow that because it suspends any preemptive state law measures as they relate to both residential and commercial tenancies. So that authorization is there. We would want to look at other, what other jurisdictions are doing. Most jurisdictions I've seen so far are only doing this on the residential side of things. San Jose actually has an explanation in its staff report tonight as to why they're not doing it right now for commercial, but we can look at both of these.
Okay, very good. Very well timed as well. And Mayor Scharf, you're on the line. I think you said you had a...
Yes, I'm still here.
Very good.
So I wonder if any of these eviction ordinances have any provision for smaller landlords that may own, you know, one unit or two units versus a large apartment complex that's corporate-owned? Because I can imagine some of these smaller landlords, if they don't get paid, they will miss their mortgage payment for the property. So I would just wonder, do you know if any of these ordinances that are coming forward so far have any distinguished at all between large and small landlords?
I'm not aware of that distinction being made in the ordinances. I'll certainly look for that while we're doing a more thorough review once these ordinances are passed. The one thing that may be relevant to your point, Mayor, is that some of these ordinances are requiring that the tenant pay what they are able to, if they're able to pay something. So these temporary suspensions aren't necessarily always for all of the rent. They may just be what the renter cannot pay, and so...
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So the reason I'm thinking of this is if we could set up something through West Valley Community Services, I know they have done emergency payments to people that are about to be evicted, but I'm thinking more about an emergency loan that could be paid back, zero interest, over a certain number of months, and the city could put up the capital to start with. Now, we wouldn't want to do that for a large corporate landlord that doesn't really have an issue with not collecting the rent for a few months. But for smaller landlords, like a single unit or duplex, we might want to find a way to set something like that up through West Valley.
Okay, point taken. Thank you.
And for the record, I don't think we should include businesses in this particular ordinance. We can look at a separate ordinance for that if we want to do that later. I think it's a little unlikely that somebody would evict a business and try to get another business that also couldn't pay the rent because they can't operate their restaurant or whatever. So I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Sinks does not have questions. I have a couple. How soon can staff bring back a proposed urgency ordinance and perhaps as well as a regular ordinance?
So we've discussed this, and we think it's reasonable to do so within a one-week timeframe, so at the March 24th meeting. My understanding is that would be a special, that item would be heard as part of a special meeting, and so that would provide us a little more time to do the drafting. And furthermore, just to clarify the distinction between the urgency component and the regular ordinance component, the urgency component would take effect immediately and would be a stopgap until the regular ordinance takes effect 30, on the 31st day after the second reading.
Great. Yeah, that's a great segue into my other question, which has to do with retroactivity. Are we planning on making it retroactive to, for example, the start of our directive to shelter in place? And if we are thinking about it, is that even possible to do? So essentially, basically saying that the renters are protected from evictions as of date certain earlier than when we enact?
We can certainly look at that. I don't believe that's in San Jose's, but I do recall that one or two of these ordinances discussed the commencement of this statewide state of emergency as triggering some provision here, so I'll take a look and let you know.
Okay, so we'll look at the retroactivity, and you think you can bring it back in about a week to our next meeting. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards or emails from the public?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, I have four written communications that I will read.
Just to clarify, Madam City Clerk, so this, we're not talking about emails that were sent in prior to this. We're talking about emails that were sent to you specifically for public comment.
Yes, we have not received any emails during this public comment. However, we do have four that we received before 5:00.
So I just want to make a distinction between the two because we always get emails on items. We're not necessarily going to read every email we get onto an item for these items. What we're basically doing is we're inviting the public to let you know that if they will have public comment that they want to read into the record, then we'll go ahead and read it. So the question again is, just to be very clear, because there are some, there are some items for which, you know, I don't want to set a precedent of making it such that anything that gets emailed on an item gets read into the record during, right?
Correct.
So we're just opening it up. So just to repeat the question again, from the time that we started this item to... from the time that we started this item to now, have there been any emails from the public that are requesting it be read into the record?
And we've just received one.
We did receive one. Excellent.
And I'm happy to read that.
And I think you might have a blue card as well. And I'll go ahead and ask you to read the comment into the record and then we'll take the member of the public.
Certainly, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
This email is from Connie Cunningham. City Council, can this proposed ordinance be worded to deal with the fact that some people do not have homes in which to shelter in place? Without homes, rent is not the issue. Income may well be the issue. However, the person needs a place to live. Can they be provided with funds to pay rent for a place during this crisis? This is a critical health and safety of all residents. It is a cold night, so illness combined with cold can be deadly. Connie Cunningham representing herself only.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And I think this should go without saying, but we're also going to have a three minute limit, thank you, on our public comments through email. We do have a member of the public here to make a comment. And we have Kitty Moore. Welcome Kitty.
Good evening, City Council. With regards to Connie Cunningham's comment, I called West Valley, I'm sorry, I called the West Valley non-emergency line when it was raining and very cold because we have two encampments up on Wolf. And they suggested that we contact West Valley Community Services to see if they could find some shelter for those camps, for the people there. And then I just wanted to mention that while you're looking at assisting renters, in this situation, you're going to have homeowners who aren't going to be able to pay their mortgages. And this reminds me of the Great Recession. And I'm wondering what you plan on doing for, you know, the whole scenario that we're going to be looking at. And, you know, keep in mind that while they're talking about flattening the curve, that is for essentially this round that we're looking at with this illness, with this virus. And it's very likely that we're going to be sheltering in place for the three week period. And then if they lift that, there's a very high probability that we're going to have people who are traveling, who will come back to our community and that we're going to be looking at this for an extended period, I've heard, into 2021. So I'd like to see if there's something that you intend to do for homeowners who will be losing potentially their income in order to pay their mortgages and not just the renters. Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty. And we'll bring it back to council. And again, to reiterate, we'll go ahead and request a motion at this point, if there is one to be brought. Councilmember Sinks.
I would be happy to do that, yeah. And I will preface my remark now, having heard from everybody with saying, I think we've gotten a lot of really thoughtful emails from folks. There was a letter that came in late this afternoon from Cupertino For All that made some good points. There was a letter that came to us from the CAA, right? Representing apartment owners. And I would, for my part, and I'll put this in the motion, ask that as we're drafting ours, so that we take these two points of view into account as well as look deeply into whether it makes sense to essentially take what San Jose has done. I mean, what they're doing makes a lot of sense here and it's in our packet. But basically, I think it ought to form the model for what we do. They're basically saying there's, the elements are this. Moratorium for 30 days. Renters must demonstrate substantial loss of income through documentation or other objectively verifiable means. They must notify their landlords. So there's some landlord, there's some balance here in protecting landlords. Must notify their landlords on or before the day that rent is due that they have substantial loss of income as a result of the declared emergency. So, and then the legislation that's proposed include findings of potential job loss, wage loss, or other impacts. And then I think advocacy, the right way to do this is, you know, we don't have money to pay everybody's mortgage who might lose their jobs. That's quite how it is. Unless we happen to get a large amount of federal assistance, my guess is that that would be administered through the state or some other agency. I can't imagine the bureaucracy associated with every city running a mortgage assistance program. But I think it is appropriate for us to work with the California Apartment Association in advocating with the relevant organizations for temporary relief for burdened unpaid landlords. And then the also, the other San Jose provision that I thought made sense, their point E is evaluating the potential for including in the legislation 120 day period for affected tenants. That is with, whose income has been affected by this crisis to become current on past due rent. So I think those are all elements that I would like to see. I'd like to see the points made in the CAA letter and for Cupertino For All be incorporated in this. And so I would, we're not, I guess we're not making a motion tonight, other than...
Well, you're giving direction in the form of a motion.
Are you looking for a motion or are you looking for direction?
Well, I'm going to take what you just said as a motion. And I'm going to ask for a friendly amendment. If anyone else wants to make a friendly amendment, we can make that by way of direction. We also have another round of discussion, so if anything comes out of there. So I'm going to ask that you add, "Over the years, I have asked our housing staff to consider taking a look at our Affordable Housing Fund and trying to find a way to put some of those dollars over to rental assistance in case of emergency." West Valley Community Services does have that program. It does ask for dollars from Cupertino on an ongoing basis. What I would like to have considered, and I'm not saying that we should enact or put in urgency or, you know, permanent ordinance, is the mechanism for moving those dollars over. I thought it was a great comment. I don't remember who made it. I apologize for that. It was a great comment to think about having a loan program. So if we could divert some of those dollars from the two or three million or however many dollars that are sitting there in our Affordable Housing Program right now and say, these are going to be allocated for loans for people, short-term loans on zero interest when they can pay back in order for them to be able to help. I think that will help get us over to that point. I would just like to explore the idea.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. All I'm guessing, right, is when we look at the overhead of administering these programs, given that we're in a crisis, I mean, the city staff has limited resource to do this kind of stuff, I'm guessing that the overhead may make it a challenge.
It's possible. It's possible. And I agree with what you're saying. West Valley Community Services does have a...
You know, the funds that we get from the federal government have to be used in very specific ways. But I'll agree to put your suggestion in that we explore.
For consideration.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say is that that's why I mentioned WVCS. It has a program already. There is a large appetite out there for volunteer services right now. We're canceling our volunteers, or at least we're postponing it from May 2nd. You know, I've heard from volunteer organizations actually, you know, literally asking me Sunday to attend an event on Thursday, to which I replied, you know, "Look, let's be very careful about this." And then, of course, we have the shelter in place order. There is a big appetite out there virtually. And I think we could get some good consolidated help, which speaks to some of the comments that, you know, yourself and Councilmember Willie were making. But I thank you for being willing to add that to your motion.
So are you seconding?
I'm going to go ahead and make that friendly amendment. I appreciate you accepting it. I want to open it up to the other council members to see if they have any other comments that they would like to, or friendly amendments that they would like to make to what your current motion stands as. Mayor Scharf, I can hear you.
Sure, so I was one that brought up the loan program. I, the 120 days...
I hate to interrupt you. You're very dim. If you have a light perhaps to turn on or something?
I don't know why it went dim all of a sudden.
Okay, no worries. We can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, so the 120 days, I was thinking that the tenants should be given probably at least four months to, maybe five or six months to catch back up with the rental payments that they missed. I don't think that 120 days may be enough. Maybe six months of a payment schedule. And just to reiterate the goal for trying to do a loan program, not administered by the city, but by West Valley Community Services. I mean, we don't have enough money in the city to start massive subsidies of grants that could be made to tenants. But I think we could have enough money to start, to seed a loan program. So, yeah, those are two things I'd like to see in the ordinance. And I'd also like to see the waiving of late fees for non-payment of rent once the tenant starts catching up again. They shouldn't have to also be paying. I mean, these late fees can really add up quickly. You know, sometimes it can be, you know, they start adding them every 10 days, it will go up again. So can we put something in there about waiving of late fees?
Councilmember Sinks, will you accept that as part of your motion to have staff consider those items that Mayor Scharf just identified?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Mayor Scharf, are there any other items that you would like as a friendly?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so just keeping us on focus here, right now what we're doing is we're asking for any friendly amendments to Councilmember Sinks's motion. Are there any?
Can we, can we just make it more broad? Not just waiving of late fees, but waive any penalty for late payment? Because I don't know what other penalties are there. I think this applies, this applies before any eviction notice for people who expect they won't be able to pay because of loss of income. Then any penalty because of this delay of payment should be waived.
Councilmember Sinks, would you be willing to?
Including, but not only the late fees.
Again, I think what's good about San Jose's ordinance is, you know, if you're a landlord and you're concerned that somebody's just trying to forego payment or delay payment, no, there's, I mean, in the ordinance, right? They're talking specifically about demonstrated income loss due to the coronavirus. And I think in that circumstance, whatever the payments, late fees, or other things are, ought to be considered. So I appreciate the thought.
Okay, excellent. That's accepted. Anything else for the motion, Councilmember?
I think it was mentioned also that we should also encourage people to pay partially if they are able to because some landlords do depend on this payment for their mortgage or other payment.
I think that should be considered too.
Considered.
Absolutely, we can consider that.
And then I'm also wondering about whether landlords would be not required to make non-essential maintenance or repairs so that during this period. Because I guess landlords have their obligation too if we are allowing renters to... So, but I'm not a landlord, so I don't know. Maybe the mayor has more to comment. Are there non-essential maintenance that we, the landlords could be, we could allow them to delay the maintenance?
Well, why would?
Would there be any penalty if they don't do it?
I don't know any landlord that does non-essential maintenance. That's hard to answer. I mean, I own one unit as a rental, so I'm probably not a good, good source of that information.
And this is your city attorney. I will point out that the shelter in place is occurring during most of this. So there's limits on what, why people can leave their house.
Right, essential reasons, okay. Excellent. Councilmember Willie, did you have any requests to add to Councilmember Sinks's motion at this point?
So I agree with each of the ads. I think they're great, a lot of thought. So the comments that I would simply add is, so it sounds like we will have this back on the 24th for review? I mean, do we have that as?
Staff will bring it back when it's ready. We think it'll be on or about the 24th, but we'll have to notice a meeting and all that. So I would request that you leave a little wiggle room and we'll get it back to council as soon as it's ready.
So I did already request, I did already call a special meeting for the 24th. And I'm hoping that by then, the governor will have done something about the ability to meet, for all of us to meet remotely.
Councilmember Willie, any other?
Done.
So then, yeah, two other ones. So one would be that when they bring the ordinance back, that because there's quite a few different facets, 120 days versus six months, waiving of the late fees versus all fees, when they need to notify the owner, the ability of the tenant to pay as much as possible. I would ask that when you bring it back, that each of these are more or less itemized so that we can kind of go down and adjust each one that we felt needed some adjustment a little bit easier. So we want to make this happen as soon as possible. And I think that would hopefully help to not have too much confusion, you know, just these items that we've been talking about. And so then my third comment is, I do like the mayor's suggestion about, mayors and I guess vice mayors, about the potential, the potential to use some of the money in our Affordable Housing Program to help West Valley Community Services distribute where needed. And so I think that goes beyond this ordinance. But I would hope that you could bring back to us with, bring back to us an additional understanding of what might work for us and city staff. So that, you know, this is a crisis, a crisis is now, and time is of the essence. And so I think if we discuss these things as soon as possible and potentially help where the help is needed.
Okay, so just to encapsulate and try to summarize your comment, Councilmember Willie, you would like to also add some kind of guidance with regard to how do we optimize the interfacing between, for example, West Valley Community Services and the city in coordinating and effectuating this new provision or urgency ordinance that we'll be putting forth to the community? Is that a fair summary of your third comment?
That is pertaining to the ordinance that they'll bring back. But I'm asking for them to come back with an understanding of what they would envision would be possible, potentially using some of the funds in the Affordable Housing account that we've got.
Understood.
And because we're not really good at administering funds, but West Valley Community Services is. So again, for them to try to give us an understanding of what they, you know, staff feels could be done so that providing we hear what we would be supportive of, we could move faster on it rather than starting the discussion next Monday.
Absolutely, okay. Councilmember Sinks, will you amend your motion to add Councilmember Willie's items?
It sounds much akin to what we've already discussed. I think for the purpose of this meeting, right? We have to talk about emergency provisions. But it could be, right, after our thoughtful review that we would find that there are some ongoing programs that might emerge from this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so Councilmember Willie, were those your items to add to the motion at this point?
Sure.
Okay, so the only item that I would add, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Chau, I'm going to cut you off. We're not going to go back and readjust and go back and forth. You will have another round after the motion is seconded, if it is seconded. My request is that we add a retroactivity investigation in, per my question originally. I just wanted to get that explicit into the motion and that would be it.
Sure.
Do we have a second for Councilmember Sinks's motion?
Second.
All right, any desire for further discussion before we vote?
So something I mentioned earlier that I hope that we also protect small business tenants. tenants who might be evicted during this time. I understand that it might be a separate ordinance, but I hope the staff can look into what other cities are doing, because I believe Berkeley already is looking at that, and they even are providing bridge funding for small business and art organizations.
Okay, excellent. Well, appreciate the comment, Councilmember Chow. I agree that it's important. Procedurally, I would just advise that, since we're following Rosenberg's rules right now, if you felt strongly about it enough, such that you wanted to add it, at this point, since we already have a motion and a second, you would be introducing another motion, presumably except, taking into account Councilmember Sinks's motion, seconded, and adding what you'd like. But I think as it stands, we do have your comment out on the record. Staff can take it under advisement. What would you like to do at this point?
So I should propose, what's it, this amendment motion?
I would suggest that you put another motion on the dais, and then we would vote on it first, if it gets seconded. And this is just my suggestion, you could take Councilmember Sinks's motion and add to it. But, or...
So, okay, how should this work?
I suppose what we could do, that's what my suggestion would be. If you wanted to take your own motion, introduce it, and then see if we can find a second. If there is, we'll go ahead and vote on it. If there is no second, we'll just proceed with the current motion on the dais.
I think this would be like an addition of Councilman Sinks's motion, right? So I'm proposing to add this item. So do we vote on this addition first?
You could have a motion to amend.
So a motion to amend, and then we vote on the amendment first, right?
Okay, what is your amendment?
Amendment is to also consider small business tenants and looking into a potential bridge fund for small businesses, and look at what other cities are already doing that we might be able to follow.
Okay. Is there any desire for discussion on this amendment before I ask for a second?
So I'd like to discuss in the sense that, I'd like to ask city manager if she feels that would that possibly be too much to be able to handle by Tuesday, the 24th? I find that, I think it's imperative that we get back here as soon as possible, so we've settled on the 24th. I definitely support that we should be looking at provisions for small businesses before we hear that the businesses are actually closing up and it's too late to do anything. But I just get the feel that with what we already talked about, your staff has to be in this, in this crisis time, needs time to be looking at San Jose, the other ordinances, what they can get and bring back to us. So if you could make a comment, if you felt that they have the bandwidth?
Good idea.
Then I think it's possible to add it as an amendment, but if you feel it goes beyond the bandwidth, then I would say that anything you could do before the 24th, great, but to not in any way delay the first one, and then if we needed on the following week to have a meeting to discuss the small business aspect.
I'll defer over to Seth. He's going to be spending the time.
All right. Seth, if you're still on the line.
Yep, I'm on the line. I'm happy to do it. We can add it in. I don't think it would, you know, at least looking into it would scramble things too much. So, yeah, we're available to do that if you would like. I would say, substantively, it is quite different from the other aspect of what we're talking about tonight, and I am not aware right now of any models of what you're talking about. So in that sense, we would be sort of, you know, in fresh territory for your consideration.
Just to clarify, so the first priority is still the tenant protection for next Tuesday, right? And then in case, this is, in case you can also bring us more information about the business tenant protection next Tuesday, it's great. If not, we can get more information in further future of council meetings. Because I suppose most business tenants can still make this month's payment, but then it's further, because they lost the whole business this month, they might not be able to make payment following month.
Okay, so we do have an ability to proceed, it seems, from our staff and staff attorney. So we have a motion from Councilmember Chow to add businesses as part of the rental protections. I would ask that staff not compromise the core function of what we're looking at tonight, and if it gets an excessive amount of time, not to be indelicate about it, of course, you know, use, you know, reasonable discretion with regard to those hours.
Vice Mayor, may I ask for just a clarification on Councilmember Chow's amendment?
Certainly.
Is it just to have us look into whether additional business tenant protections would be worthwhile and bring back a recommendation next Tuesday? And then the council could direct us at that time, whether they wish to proceed with doing a full ordinance for tenant protections based on the additional information we're able to bring back?
Yeah, I think that's, and also potential bridge fund for small business.
I do think, I mean, from what I hear, there are some cities seeing what they can do for business generally. And without getting too, I mean, I agree, the first priority has to be to deal with people who are resident in the city, right? So that's, that's got to be the first priority. I'm going to let them talk themselves out before I...
So much of this is, would be the work of our small business liaison and our housing and our...
Yes.
And so it's a little difficult to speak for her right now, and she's, I know, trying to line them up with special programs as well. But we could, but I imagine she'll be able to bring some more information to you on next Tuesday.
Yeah, right.
They'll be kind of separate, but we'll try and bring it back as much as possible.
Yeah, I think they really are separate items, right? They're distinctive in creating a program for businesses. Yeah, in some ways, it has its own tricky points.
So Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, recognizing...
Yeah, I mean, I would really want to completely separate the tenant protection for residents in business. The business one is very complicated. I mean, you have businesses that may have always been losing money, even before this all started. Now, do you provide bridge funding to those, as well as to the businesses that were doing well but are not now doing well? I mean, this, this could be extremely complicated ordinance to implement. And of course, you know, where is the money actually going to come from as well? That's the other, the other question. Now, I would favor putting whatever funds we have into protecting residential tenants.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. Let's do this. Let's go ahead and have the item as described by our city attorney and approved by Councilmember Chow. And when it comes back, please try to make it in a separate agenda item. Is that agreeable to you, Councilmember Chow? Is there a second for Councilmember Chow's motion to amend?
So I amend it with how you described it, that it would be a separate item that would be grabbed.
Okay, great. So there's a second. Let's go ahead and vote on the amendment.
Yeah, and I agree with your sentiment, too.
Excellent. Let's go ahead and vote on Councilmember Chow's amendment first. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the motion carries four to one with Mayor Scharf opposing. Let's get back to Councilmember Sinks's original motion. We've had a round of comments. If there are any, if there's anyone, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Councilmember Chow, but you've had your chance at the comments, but if there's anybody else with respect to further comments on Councilmember Sinks's motion, please, you know, feel free to speak now. Personally, I think we've had a great discussion. All right. All in favor of Councilmember Sinks's motion, as amended by all of us over the course of the discussion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion of Councilmember Sinks passes unanimously. That concludes the item number two. That also concludes our meeting. I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to March 24th, 2020. I see our county, our city manager adjusting our microphone. Is there something that you wanted to say before we adjourn?
I believe the mayor had some prepared remarks he wanted to make.
Oh, very...
Well, I think, I think he could. Unless he doesn't want to.
Okay, so as the person chairing this meeting, I'll go ahead and open it up to Mayor Scharf. Did you want to provide?
I'm not sure what Deb was referring to.
Okay.
You have an...
Those were just to start the meeting.
I know, but this is good messaging. But, okay. That's okay, he doesn't have to.
Okay, well, that being the case, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to March 24th. Stay safe and stay healthy out there, and thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.
Great.